Let's open the meeting. City of Trinidad Planning, Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission, Special Meeting Tuesday, April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Would please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Leoni?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
Armijo?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Spain? Materano?
Here.
Enrolo?
Here.
Moving on to public hearing. Chapter fourteen code, land use, code updates, final reviews.
Right.
Floor is yours, sir.
We are here. This is the, this is the big moment, hopefully. I think we have accomplished what we set out to do, which is to look at your review procedures in your code. The last couple of things that I want to call to your attention, Prop one twenty three is, if you remember in the last, like your last ballot, was a statewide affordable housing initiative. And to qualify for that funding, each community will have to opt in and make a commitment to build your affordable housing stock by three percent a year, or nine percent over three years. And that funding can go towards homeownership, it can go towards rental housing, but it's a pretty substantial pot of money. Sorry, I should probably do that type of. To qualify though, you're going to have to have expedited review, which is kind of funny for rural areas that I represent, because it's not like Denver where if I'm a, if I'm an affordable housing developer and I submit my application, the planning office might tell me it's six months away before I can be on an agenda, right? Because we're just too full. I had the situation actually, and one of the most powerful that did work for, but where we had like a three-month queue of applications. So to qualify though, the state is you have to have in your code an expedited fast-track process for affordable housing. So luckily, you guys already have an affordable housing section, and so if you really go to on the layer, the very last page, G, fast-track review, that paragraph is being added. This is what I'm suggesting to qualify you for the future for Prop one two three. What will have to happen is by two thousand and twenty six, you must have this in your code to continue to receive funds for under Prop one two three. What's nice is if, since we're already doing this, and this technically counts as a qualified strategy even though you don't need it, it's in your code. It may specifically say. Basically what it says is once staff deems it complete, an application if it has affordable housing as a component, it must be placed on an agenda within a few days, which is an issue. I mean, let's face it, you know. So it, it just, it's here to meet the intent of the state statute that's going to be required, but in reality, it's not like you guys have such a long queue. Now, maybe someday you do, but for the, for now, you don't have like a Denver situation where somebody might be six months out from getting onto a, onto a public hearing. So that's, so that's that piece. I included a link if you want to read into Prop one two three. It's kind of they're building the airplane as they're flying it, because the, the first round, because the state's budget, if you're aware of this, the state's budget starts July first. So the new budget starts July first. So technically, the funds from Prop one two three have already started collections, and so they're going to have a half a year of collections because it started January first per the ballot. But the actual adoption legislation that the state's going to come out with starts July first. So they're trying to build the plane as they're flying to create a program for how those funds can be, can be used. So, so it's quite a bit of funding.
If rural area is going to be the same as people like in Denver?
No, it's, there's no, no. No, what I will say is though.
Cause I read something on this.
Yeah, yeah. The, what I will say is, for instance, they can create certain programs out of the funding. So for instance, that there was a grant, transformational affordable housing grant, that specifically allowed rural and rural resorts preference on that. The state has gone to, basically your county is labeled one of three. Now it's urban, rural, or rural resort. So you guys are rural as a county. So there will be special programs that could come out that say this is just for rural counties. And I certainly have been banging the drum on that as much as I can, because my, I, I came from a resort community and from, from practice.
I think the city staff look to do this pretty good too.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is that there's more funding now than there was a year ago, right? How the state, again, allocates is, it's not, it's, it's completely up to, you know, the squeaky wheel gets to grease.
Right.
Is really true in this, and I've seen that play out. Unfortunately, the votes right now at the State House, the rural communities are very, there's a super majority right now that's not rural. So there is, there is a little bit of that going on. But there, there, I think there's some, I hope the tides are starting to turn. I mean, the state has all these new energy initiatives, et cetera, where I work in the eastern plains. You know, I am witnessing transmission lines and wind and solar projects coming out of the ground. The issue is there's no resources being diverted to a place like Baca County that is installing these giant wind farms. And they need, they would love to have new employees come into their community, right? And good paying jobs. But the issue is, they can build an industrial wind farm, but who's going to maintain it? Because there's no housing, right? And so it's, it's all part of the, the argument to be made. It's like, we all want, you know, when the state wants to transition to renewable energy as a, you know, and increase our supply. I mean, currently, the state's electrical grid is thirty eight percent coal. All right? So your, your Tesla is not gas, now it's cool powered. It's like, you know, what's the logic there? But to, I think, you know, as we continue to chip away, those are the cases that we have to make for rural counties.
Right.
And like Los Angeles, is that these jobs, these industrial jobs, these manufacturing jobs, the rail, the rail line that you have here in town is essential to keeping the rest of the state to do the things that they want to do. So that, I, I, I don't, I don't have the beautiful answer that you want because.
I just wanted your input on it, that's all.
Okay.
You've been reading some stuff on it too.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's, that's the, the affordable housing update thing to this. The other one I wanted to just make sure we touched on is so, I'm just laying this table here today, tonight. So we discussed that, like, townhomes, and I wanted to, so you, in your current code, single-family attached is townhome. The issue is with the current code, you don't have a sub, which we will have in the new code. You don't have a way to create homeownership or ownership per unit, right? So we've tackled that with subdivision code. What I wanted to look at tonight is, is whether or not you want to add any additional permitted zone districts or conditional, and I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but you could also have make them conditional to townhouses now that we've kind of really gotten into the, the depth of what they really are now. And, you know, the, the two that, just from where I sit, you know, obviously industrial, housing industrial doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, right? And up in, I think your RE and your low-density residential, I don't see a big townhouse project making a whole lot of sense in either of those two zones. But the medium housing residential and the community commercial, both those districts have housing components, right? The community commercial is right out, right on the fringe of downtown, and your median density is by definition probably the most logical place to build, build something like that. So whether or not the planning commission, now that we've created this homeownership model, wants to consider either making and adding townhomes as permitted or conditional across that line item is totally up to your purview. But I wanted to make sure that we didn't skip an important step because we went through all that process the other night. So this is a pretty minor insignificant change in my opinion, but I also wanted to make sure you guys had a chance to weigh in on this. And certainly you don't have to make any change to that, but.
What would be the advantage of making the change?
The advantage, I, I think you should at least consider conditional uses for those two, those two districts.
Which two?
The medium HR and the CC. Both of those districts. I guess what I would say to you is, you have to be thinking of the future, right? And your current, one of the current lacking things that Trinidad faces is you have an aging boomer population. And the reality is townhomes really do create housing mobility. With the, the townhome structure in itself is, allows for a housing type that is going to be very attractive to that aging population, and is going to be able to move folks from big single-family homes into something where they don't have a huge yard and is affordable at a, at a price point. The other thing is townhomes, if you think about them, they're twenty percent cheaper to construct. So a lot of affordable housing developers like myself, either building duplexes or townhomes because you build, you do. Like, for instance, a duplex, just take a duplex townhome, for very simple, like math. If I, if I take a duplex or I take two single families, you can think about the cost. If I build two single families, I have two foundations. I have two trenches, I gotta grow, I gotta have cut out, cut the street, put two utilities in. A duplex, I have one foundation, I have two less walls, right? Cause I have to share the wall. So now all of a sudden, I've cut two walls, windows, everything, and I can trench at least one of my BP utilities, either sewer or water, in the same trench going out along the park, right?
Don't they have to build two walls still? Like, with the space between them or no?
Yeah, the walls are attached. They are, they, they, they're fire rated, but all of that is, is three-quarter inch drywall.
So what's the, you know how up at north they sell paired homes, which in my mind is a townhouse? But they said, when I asked the question, they said, oh, well, that's because there's a space.
There's, there, yeah, there, there is space.
Okay.
So the wall, so you have a piece of drywall, a stud, a drywall, and another sheet of drywall. Does the outside sheet of dry, and then you have insulation in the studs, right?
Okay.
There is a, there's a, there's a half inch gap between those two walls where those drywalls sit. So when you frame one, you frame one up, you frame the other one up, they stand up next to each other. But that's just drywall. You don't have siding.
Framing and all the other stuff, yeah, got it.
You don't have windows, framing, every, you.
Got it, got it.
And they all sit on the same count. That wall shares a footer underneath it.
Got it.
Right? So you only have one footer instead of two footers underneath, underneath your foundation. So there's a lot less cost. It's about twenty percent is the savings, which is significant when you talk about housing. So that's, that's, again, I, I'm a big proponent of, the reason I'm a big proponent of townhomes is I, especially in rural Colorado, is the American dream is own your own house. If you own a condo, you don't own, you don't own the ground, right? You own the airspace.
Yeah.
And I get it, and if I lived in a big city, that's what I could live in, and that makes sense. And also, I mean, there's, there's, there's those types of things, but a townhome affords somebody to own the land and everything under it. And most importantly, when they go to a bank, they're getting a single-family home loan, not a condo loan. And the insurance requirements, et cetera, are much different.
Do you have a map or do they have a map where we could see where, I can't place where MHR even is in our town?
Yeah, we can, we could pull it up on the zoning map on these houses up here on the.
And then community commercial is like spot all over, right?
It's kind of on the out, outside of the.
It's the district.
It's the district.
Only?
No, there's, it's spotty throughout town.
The MHR, I can't even, like, in my brain, I'm like, I don't know if I've ever come across it.
Mobile home residential?
Oh, mobile, that's what that is.
That's on the entrances of the mobile home parks.
Oh, okay. That's why it's not coming to my brain.
Actually, I should pick it up. Sorry, I thought that was me.
So we're already in me, we already are allowed in me, right?
So that's MHR, right?
Medium-density residential.
Yes, yes, sorry. It is, sorry.
That's MHR, correct?
Yeah. So, yeah, so my, my fault. So, yeah, so really, it's community commercial would be the other one that potentially added to. I think, I don't, I don't. Low-density residential, I think, is problematic. The only, the only thing I could say if you wanted to look at that is make it a conditional use. But the other, I'm not trying to allow you for low, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the pro-con on low-density. But please don't take this as me pushing for it. The pro on low-density residential is that it's traditionally a single-family home district. Your zoning will have density requirements. So you can't put more than one house per what you'd be allowed to anyways. So if you have two lots and you want to build two homes, being able to attach them, right? But is that within the community fabric of your low-density? I think that the answer to that probably is no. So I don't, I've just given you the pro con of this. I'm not saying you should. That would be the consideration there. Honestly, I can, I'm just looking at your code right now. They don't even allow two dwellings. So my suggestion would be just keep it at a low density.
I think that's a good idea.
So that is bringing us to community commercial.
Right.
And would you want to make that conditional or permitted?
Do we have one?
I can try.
Somebody call it up. I think I just sent one to somebody.
Well, actually, here, do this. Keela, do you know how to get it on the assessors?
Uh.
Doesn't show up on the assessors.
Just Google, uh, Los Angeles County's zoning map.
The zoning won't show up there.
Oh, it won't?
No.
Oh, never mind, don't do that.
I wish it did, then I wouldn't have to call Chris all the time. Poor Chris.
We're working on that.
Oh, I can't wait. We're working on it, working on our GIS. Slowly the cherry. Let's see, wait a second, I'm gonna walk up here. Let's see if I brought it in here. I think I didn't.
Technology.
See if the zoning will show up.
Yeah.
Anywhere.
It's loading.
Okay, it's slowly loading. There it goes. So your CC or the light pinks, like, look like that here. And then your medium density is this ugly yellow.
Medium density residential. Your community commercial of all of this outlining pink areas. So it's, it's kind of like the downtown area, down, next to downtown.
Yeah, and here's downtown.
So the white, light pink?
Yes, so it's this pink, this pink, this pink.
So it's spread out?
Again, you could consider it conditional, and then that way you can do it side by side and, and look at it.
So there, I see like three different shades of pink?
Yeah, community commercial, there's the historic preservation is the dark pink, and then neighborhood services is the lightest pink.
So that's this.
So worrying which would be.
That's that.
Okay.
And I think that, that new apartments. Usually that's a doctor's office or community services.
Does that have to be decided now?
I would suggest doing it so that it's part of what we send to the council. And, and again, if you don't, I, I don't think if, if you don't want, you know, not, no decision is a decision, right? So it, it's, it's completely up to, to you. I just wanted to make sure you knew where this now, what this use actually sits in your code, because we actually had a conversation about someone wanting to look at townhomes and not knowing. Cause the other question is, is, is multifamily dwelling actually a townhouse, right? And when we actually went through, single-family attached actually has in brackets townhomes. So it's in your code, it's just the issue that through current definition doesn't speak to the party wall, and also doesn't have any provisions on how to subdivide it. So we fixed that. And again.
So if it went permitted, that means they would have to come in with their full plan, like blah, 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 staff, everything went through it. But if we went, you know, where we went to, um.
Conditional.
Yes, thank you. So that would be a base by base, right?
Case by case, yep.
Yeah, case by case.
Yep. And they have the standards they have to meet around parking, noise, traffic, et cetera, that have to come in. I honestly.
How much space do we have available in medium and high-density and neighborhood service? Like, is it really necessary to open it up to somewhere else? You know, what I'm saying? I don't think that it's necessary, because we already have plenty of medium-density, high-density and neighborhood service. At least that's what I saw when you were over this direction.
Right.
I think that, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but you're just talking about the, for the medium home, or, um, the MHR and then the CC is those two.
Well, MHR is double home, so I don't think that's appropriate. But I think what we're looking at is, is CC. The only other thing I would add to CC is that you allow, you allow multifamily in CC. So the question is, would you allow it to be a townhome or apartment complex? And again, it can be conditional. I mean, that's, like, you know, if you're adding something, I would personally suggest if you're considering adding a new, you add it as a conditional use for now, and see some of those projects come forward and whether or not they, they fit.
Because right now, we don't have any avenue to take a townhome forward, correct?
Well, you, as of, well, you, you do and you don't. You do because it's under a single-family attached. Or you don't, is you don't have any subdivision standards. A townhome by definition is a single-family on its own parcel. Your current code just basic, basically says I can develop, how I subdivide them.
Right.
Which is your issue. And you have to have, the, the code we put forward in the subdivision is very clear. Like, that's why you want that, that section, because from a city perspective, right? Life safety, health, safety, welfare, those are your primary responsibilities up here. When you build a townhome project, you care about the utilities, you care about the fire system, like firewall, fire sprinklers, and making sure that you have access to take care of the property, right? That's your charge. So we did that. We've taken care of that with the subdivision, right? This is really, this is community context now for talking about tonight. So whether or not you, I mean, you do already allow multifamily, again, not trying to make a case here for either one, but you do, I mean, it's a, community commercial does have, ha, does have multifamily and the work units as, as, as residential options for that district.
So what would the downside be to allowing the townhome?
I don't see a downside, again, because it's, if you have a developer who comes in and builds townhomes versus apartments, it's just you're, you have, you're expanding from rental to homeownership for those, you know, as a develop, you know, to the developing community. But I don't, again, I don't have a dog in this life.
I wish we would have had time to think about it.
Sure.
That's the only thing for me. It makes sense, but I'd like to be able to look at the map longer. Just kind of see what it real, what, I mean, I can see the areas, but I don't know what streets they are, or any, you know, and I'm trying to picture like what's all around that area again.
Are we allowed to talk about proposed development? No?
I mean, the other option, like, the other option.
Really, a case by case kind of makes sense to me, you know.
You know, the other option would be, just keep in mind that if, if you're, if you are developing a multifamily, because it's permitted, you could come through the condo regs, right? But I have my own, I have my own opinion about condos. They're, they're, your end buyer, you're not putting your end buyer in the best possible situation, because they own airspace, they don't own. And I think, I mean, everyone's heard their stories about condominiums. I don't need to. There's, there's a reason that you guys made a decision to make condos major impact, right? So.
So there's mostly community commercial downtown. I mean, I don't have a hard time seeing the map, but it looks like it's all basically downtown.
It's, it's, it really is the, it really is the block off of your.
Town block up to there, if I could see it.
It feels like the buffer between the rest of the zoning and downtown in those cases.
Yeah, it really is that transition zone. I mean, there's some of it out here, where it really is.
What is it, what's up with the trip? What is that?
There is, there is some community commercial like there. It's.
So it's, it's really.
You'll see it in a second.
From the other side of the railroad tracks.
But.
That's not even it.
Looks like cheese.
It's here, it's just, just south of downtown, or just north of downtown.
So it goes up into Arizona.
And then it dead ends, yep.
So I don't know if you guys can see, but this is College Street. This is Prospect. Oof, I didn't touch. Arizona, a little bit higher up on Arizona, the university area. This is Schneider, you know, over by the crossroad of the park. This whole area right in there. Right? And then it goes into downtown, like all the way down Elm Street.
Main.
Linden. I was trying to get my bearings. So Linden, this is Linden, so all of this right here too. So Elm Street, and then what is this on this side of Main? Really? On Main Street in Ash?
So community commercial also allows for commercial uses.
Up into First Street, up by Ingle.
Then you have a large path up it on Main Street.
We just added that fourteen oh one East Main Street, community commercial.
Which one is on?
Uh.
Oh, where the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. For the Veros.
And then if you want to swipe up and show Santa Fe Trail also.
Oh, is it up there too?
Um, yeah. John was asking about that. It's, see it by the golf course a little bit.
Yeah, down by the golf course.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a lot of it.
And again, you know, as you start getting down in this area, is those, is that an area where you could create towns?
So it's major thoroughfares such as Main or Santa Fe Trail, and then a buffer around the downtown. And then over by the college and up Arizona.
Those areas, and, you know, again, think about mobility and housing, those areas are going to be close to services again, so. I, I'm only gonna, I probably should put a, a council person on the spot, but one question I got from council is, how do we get senior housing? This is my response to how you get senior housing, because seniors, people aging, they have assets, but they're not going to put their money into a property that. People aging, they have assets, but they're not going to put their money into a property that they don't own, right? And I don't blame them, I wouldn't either, you know, so. Enough said of that. But, you know, I know that, I know the council in particular, that they're, they're. Those townhomes is something that they really wanna. That I don't, that I don't think adding a community commercial or not is going to be the. Cattle, just break scales back, so.
Cause either way, it's still, I mean, it it comes in, they're still, it's gotta still gotta come in front of us, right?
If it's conditional, right? And technically, if it's permitted, they will as well, because it's, they're gonna have to come through with a subdivision application.
Yeah.
They're gonna subdivide it, so.
I don't see a problem with it if it's conditional. Just, that's gonna make it a case by, you know, case by case.
And you already have, I mean, it's only mixed use. Even up Arizona, that's what, that's cogged in that area. Where else is it up there? There's a model lumberers up there, right, right off of Arizona, when you went up Perbs, Arizona, went to the east, I guess. There's a model lumber, there's electric company enters, I mean.
Yeah, that'd be off Gaudi.
There are some duplexes up there, actually not a lot of duplexes, you got it for teens and seventies. Get up off Gaudi, is that?
So I guess we, if if we didn't put anything there, then no, is it like no harm, no foul, cause no matter what, it's still gonna happen?
No, no, if you don't put anything in there, that means they can't propose a townhouse. That's the danger, that's, that's the reason I wanted to bring this forward is, I wanna make sure you understand that you're taking that option. But not permitted is not permitted.
It sounds like you guys are really wanting to get this through, because Chris just said there's somebody that that wants to propose a development.
Not, I mean, they they still have the ability in their zone through for something else. Yeah, I personally, that doesn't, whether this matters or not, they can go through. They could, that application can come through with a condo. I mean, and they're gonna, no matter what, they're coming in front of you with that proposal, so. I, but, at the end of the day, what I care about is making sure that you guys see where this is in the code and know where it's at. So, yeah, they 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 kind of. Their model is a condo. But this gives them an option besides that, I guess I would say. But their model is, but I don't, I have my own, I have my own. I've sold condos to affordable housing applicants. I don't get the warm fuzzies giving them the keys, because I know what I've aimed at, right? Like, if their neighbor decides to do something obnoxious, they don't own the grass in front of their house.
Yeah.
So.
Well, they become, they become hard to finance if they turn into rentals, because then they can't get FHA. So turns into, I hate condos.
I, I can tell you this, I had a, we had a development that was one of the first affordable housing projects in Crestview. And I had a lady. Who literally would shovel all in her snow into an ADA space, just to make. Just to make a point, every, every snowstorm, and the poor guy had a wheelchair. And he was, and she would say, well, that's the condo's responsibility now to shovel the sidewalk. And the poor guy couldn't get in and out of his house, and they were just, they lived, they lived a shirt of wall. She hated him and he hated her, and I was just like, I'm like, you're really doing it, someone with a wheelchair?
Well, that happens in single family houses too.
So I I just, but you know.
It's more of a financing concern for me, for condos, because if you don't have a certain percentage that are homeowners, then you cannot even get a loan on them.
Correct.
They're unloanable. So.
And the Obama, the Obama rules on condos, you have to have at least, I think it's either seventy-five or eighty percent occupancy to get a loan on an existing project. So again, when we talked about condos in Trinidad, how many units you actually, you need at least a ten unit condo before the economies of resale. Really even play out, because if you only have four, and the, you know, the bank's looking at a seventy percent occupancy in that unit. They move out and they put their gear up, now it's, now it's only seventy-five percent occupancy.
Right.
So, you're you're absolutely right, and if you're, someone buys it and makes it an investment property, at least short term rentals. They, if it's a short term renting, you've basically made it very neighbor very difficult. For them, but.
They could still do that with a townhouse though, right now.
Well, a townhouse is, but the difference is, is if I share a wall with you in a townhouse, I'm not subject to, I I own a single family house. So when I go to sell it, I'm selling a single family house, I'm not selling.
Right, I meant with the short term.
Sure, sure.
They could still make you miserable with that.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing it all over Trinidad right now.
Oh, yeah, you can have a Airbnb right next to you, there's nothing you can do about it.
That was what we went through, we're talking about, you know.
I'm not even trying to.
So it kind of makes sense, I mean. Am I correct, what does, if we put it under, you know, like, conditional? It would still come, it has to come in front of us. Cause I mean, I I can't really see the map either, I mean, I get where Arizona is and all that, but again, I I feel the same way. I I feel like I really need to look at that area of where these, where these could, where this could happen.
And I'd really like to know how much space we have available in the permitted areas for townhouses. I've seen many beautiful townhouse developments, but they're not, they're not located in places like right off of downtown.
Right.
You know, they're in nice residential areas and they turn, you know, it feels like a homy place, it doesn't feel like you're downtown. Living, I mean, I guess.
But it's more of a medium density.
They're doing a lot of things actually.
I think so.
Yeah.
Right around downtown, they're doing a ton of townhouses.
Here?
No, Denver, downtown Denver, there's that kind of.
Even Springs, yeah, well, no, you're right.
They're knocking down single family houses and building duplexes.
Well, they they have more people than they have places to put people.
They definitely have that.
Yeah, we have, we don't have that issue. I think they wanna make it better.
I could also see them coming in and knocking down some of these dilapidated houses and building duplexes, which would beautify it.
I agree.
These houses are not being careful, the doors are terrible, they're falling down, I mean, that would be great improvement.
I agree.
There is, to to your point, there's, this is the economics of what I'm talking about. It's, is the, is the twenty percent. The problem with today's construction market and your, and your market in particular, is that. As a developer, I can't come in and scrape an old house, pay for all the asbestos mitigation, everything, and then come back and put a single family back on it. I have to.
Yeah, come like.
Yeah, that's why I'd really like to see where reading is, I wish we would have had more time to.
Sure, well, we can, let me, I'm looking at the the calendar here. Your next meeting. When is your, what's the day of the month of their meeting?
Second Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Second Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
So we can continue this to May ninth?
Is that gonna mess up what you want to do?
I will have to zoom in. Nope, doesn't, I don't, my schedule doesn't matter.
Well, it does, I mean, didn't you wanna?
I I do, I, what I will do is I'm going to bracket. Please, I'm gonna bracket your your future discussion to this one agenda item, because I have to turn over to. The city Leo council and to the clerk, a clean copy of all of this, so that we can get to the point where we go in front of council. The issue I have is that if you change one section numbering, and every reference changes throughout the whole code, so I'm gonna do it one time.
I don't wanna, my reservation, I'm not seeing the map, I don't want you guys to, if you guys feel comfortable, you know, make a motion and move forward. I just, I'm just curious, and so I don't want you to hold things up because I'm.
No, I I I agree, like I said, I I kind of would like to see, cause I have to be able to envision, you know, what's happening. So, a question, I know you're not super familiar with Trinidad, but, so on Linden, right? There was that one house, I I think it's close to Gaudi, and they knocked it down, it's kind of like a clean site. If I remember right, there's like a foundation there, and it's got deck, you know, wood deck, but they demoed that out, something, yeah, something happened. But is that what you're saying, like, something could come in there and just put a townhome right there, and then?
I don't know, cause I don't know where the medium, I have to look at all where medium is.
Medium density residential.
Cause I think that's where that would be. Now, you gotta remember, but I, that's what I, I.
So the other thing that plays into all this is your, is your.
This is empty. Which one are you pointing to, Chris? This is empty.
And where is that?
Um, that's Frontier, and then there was a lot for sale, but it's not CC.
Well, that's.
No, that's medium, isn't it, degree?
That's the yellows, yellow.
Yeah, that's the MDR, so.
That's, that's permitted.
I don't see any other CCs available.
I mean, I think, when you talk about townhomes, I mean, you're you're talking about community commercial, but. But, I mean, you also gotta look at where it's already, think about townhomes in a bigger context. And all of that, all of your. All of your dark yellow here, why are you about zooming? Where's my little hand thing? All of this yellow. Why don't you just, don't let this pan? Pan.
You just have to use one finger.
Okay. This yellow down here, those are your, these are your areas of.
What was that area down there?
Stonewall Smith.
Okay.
It's around the college, it's on the west side of the college. But keep in mind, the, just because you're permitted to do a townhome, you still have to have the density per unit, right?
So maybe.
So I can't, so I can't have like a twenty-five foot lot and build eight condos on it.
Right.
Like, your your density, the dens, your lot size determines.
Still needs six thousand square feet, okay, per unit, yeah.
Per unit, right, yeah. So you, that's the other, make sure you understand, understand that.
So in community commercial, how would that work? You'd have to really change things up on the zoning, right? Because.
It's open.
Square footage for CC, I think it's open.
Yeah, just that's it.
It's wide open.
So see, that would make them be able to stack them on top of each other, they wouldn't have to have yards or. Right?
Mm-hmm.
I have that, um, I have to go pull my code, but I'm pretty sure, I know the setbacks are open.
I'm gonna find it real quick, just.
Wouldn't it be hard to stack them on top of each other with?
You can't, you can't stack them.
Well, I didn't mean stack them like on top, I meant, yeah, yeah, like, my daughter lives in a development like this.
You can reach out your win, kitchen window and almost touch the neighbor's house.
Well, no, they all touch each other, but then out, like, the end units are the only ones that have anything, any yard at all. And it's literally like a little patio off the house, and that's it. Like, it's not even a yard, it's like a patio, and then they have like a little fence, it's like six feet, and those are only the end units. And then there's no front yard, there's no backyard, but they live up in Denver, and that's all they can afford, I mean, it's super expensive up there. But yeah, you would have no yard.
But what you just said, I want you to think about what you just said.
Yeah.
That's what they can afford?
Right.
That's the rea, that's.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
So as a affordable housing, I can't let you, I can't let you knock, really, what you just said.
I know.
Because that's, that's the issue of today's world is. My generation and younger, what you can afford, and it, again, it's, think about America. This is how you build generational wealth, it's probably, like, it's just the American system, right?
Yeah.
I I know this for a fact, I bought a house in the last recession in Salina, we're just talking about this. My house was tripled in value, and I was able to, when I needed to take out and refine my house. When I refined it, there's two point eight, I took out X number of dollars, and I went, came in and I fixed a huge home, like, foundation issue that I would never have been able to fix. If it wasn't for that, so.
And probably more so, I would say, there's a generational gap, like, me, I like a big, beautiful yard. Some people nowadays, they don't, they don't want a yard, they don't want much, yeah, they.
They don't wanna maintain it.
They just wanna, they just want a nice house to live in, that's what they care about. And that's probably, now, I would say that we still have. More people that have been in our area for longer than we have new people, but I do have, we do have a a new. Guess clientele of people that that might be more of their needs too, or wants.
If somebody really is serious about doing senior housing, that's been a passion of mine for a long time, and they don't want yards.
No, well, yes.
No.
No, right.
Yeah, but I haven't seen anybody specifically target that senior market yet, but. Fingers crossed.
And that's where it's needed.
Oh, gosh, yes.
That's where it's needed. Senior housing. Now, if, so if we, if we table this to to the next meeting, will, will you guys send us a copy of this map so we can have time to view it on our, on our own?
Sure, I can send you the links.
That would be, that would be.
Is there a physical map?
Does it stay on?
So it's part of the cur, so, it's part of the grant that, that I'm, that I'm funded under, we saved, we, we saved a chunk of that grant dollars.
I'll send you a snap.
That's not going to be, we hired a GIS consultant to actually.
That's why I didn't wanna send it out.
Get, get it, so we're, and if you remember in our zoning code now, there's this ratification of this official zoning map. That the council does by resolution, so the idea is that. The council will see the new map from the new consultant, ratify it, and then we can make it public. The issue with the danger with sharing this map, I'll be blunt, is this isn't, this isn't, this isn't certified.
Well, everybody wants to kind of see where the zoning is, and if you put that giant map on any of these little plain screens.
Well, you, I wanna be, if you do share it with them, I wanna be, big disclaimer, flashing lights. This, this is not the official zoning map of the city of Trinidad. The official zoning map of the city of Trinidad is being prepared with a subcontractor right now. It needs to be certified again by the city council. I just wanna be clear, because I don't wanna.
But if, this would probably be pretty close to what's happening, correct?
She's actually working on this map.
Yeah, she's, she's making edits and, so she's going through previous ordinances. So I just wanna be clear, like, if you shared this link with somebody else, and they look at their property and they say, my zone exists, and then.
Yeah.
When the sit, once we go through, comb all the rezone ordinances, and they look at the map and are like, my property was rezoned five years ago and this wasn't updated. That's the only danger of sharing.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
And I think flashing, I think for me, it's just gonna give me a generalization of what I'm, what I'm looking at when I look around town, I think, that's, that's how I'm looking at it.
This was one of the very delinquent items that when I started, that we, we actually took twenty thousand dollars out of my contract to do.
Now, is, was this part of the map that we were talking about, like, would be, like, reviewed on a yearly basis?
So once it's updated, it's easy, cause then when you do a rezone ordinance, you change with one parcel and the cons, you know, like, change.
Then you could just change.
But going, going through all of the, all the ordinances of the last ten years and making sure all the parcels line up. And I don't have, the GI, a GIS license for me is about twenty thousand a year, but I don't do JIS. Those, this is like that, you don't even know I don't do JIS, I don't do GIS. But, um, there's a reason for it, cause you have to have a license and subscription and everything else. So we saved the money to do that, and, wait, have you gotten an update from them? Cause they, they signed a contract.
She's, she's actively working on this, cause I've seen changes on it.
Okay.
And sometimes it doesn't come up, but, um, yeah, I've seen some definite, um, changes on, uh.
And the nice thing would be is this will be.
Break during subdivision.
I'd like to take a look at it better.
Okay, well, let's do this, let's, let's, let's table this item, or not table it, continue it to the main act. And I'm okay with that. Um, now, just, when I do, when I say that, this, I have to be in Fort Morgan on that, that, that night. So I will have to, uh, I'm sure I'll find some cozy hotel with wireless up, or wifi in Fort Morgan, I'll zoom in.
Hope we can hear you and see you.
Would it help you if we did another little special meeting sooner, that we could just say, yes, we are, we agree or?
I I was just scheduling for your normal meeting, cause that's, that's far enough out that. I, I was just scheduled for your normal meeting, cause that's, that's far enough out that, um, is there any, so let's, let's, let's transition, so you guys want more time on that, which is perfectly okay, um, is there anything else in the code currently that you guys are concerned about? That I can address on the ninth, or is this the last remaining item?
Not that I can pick up.
I, I will say, from the applicant's perspective, there are some, the, the applications that are coming through are kinda like starting to pile up, because they would rather go through the new code process than what currently is under books. So we do, we do want to try to expedite the, this, because, again, it really does help someone that's trying to get through an application. I can, I can tell you, cause I wrote down a couple of them, like, this is gonna be painstaking, if we don't fix this. Cause they have three different kinds of lease applications, and they gotta pay three different kinds of fees.
And that's kinda dealing with what we're talking about, right, towards our decision?
Well, if, under the new code, if I'm a, if I'm a developer or an applicant, and I have a conditional use subdivision, and I just have to pay limited impact, I pay one fee, we do one public notice, we have one public hearing, you can consider both of those. Otherwise, what, what's conditional use application plus a minor subdivision application, it's a couple thousand bucks at least.
Two or like four.
So we're trying to get it, so we're like, limited impact is X dollars for major impact is. So, it, it matters to a few handful people, cause it's a thousand bucks at least, so they're affordable.
So if we wait till May nine, then it has to go before city council? So they put these people up until June?
Well, what'll probably happen is that we will do city council on June sixth, instead of June six, May sixteenth and June sixth, I will be doing city council. What did I just do?
No pressure.
I know, I just did something very dumb to my calendar and all of it, so it'd be, the first reading would be the sixth, and the twentieth of June would be second reading. Versus adoption of this, this.
My personal opinion, I like to look at it at the May sixth.
Sure.
That's my personal opinion, my top information.
No problem, and that's May ninth, or, or May ninth?
May ninth, thank you.
I, I don't have any issue with this, so just don't, I don't.
How about you guys?
I'm okay. I don't, I, I, I just don't wanna see condos, uh, townhouses is what we should be looking for, and just like you said, you know, condos are more for some type of brick and bridge area and stuff like that, you know.
Or downtown, you know, in our, you know, up above, they can see condos there.
You, what about, you know, tabling it, so we have time, I mean, what's your guys' thought on that? Do you think we should? Put something in there now, or do you, do you want some time to?
I think, I think, I think we oughta look at, uh, let him put in, uh, something there that we have, could, could get started with, okay? That doesn't mean it has to, not in stone where we have to leave it there, we could always, uh, work on it, but just like Tony Paradiso wants to do with the old drive-in theater, okay, uh, he, he, they wanted to do some townhouses in that area. Okay, but we don't have a whole lot of, they're just not really ready, because they don't know enough about it.
Now, these can be normal two-story, like, townhouses, right?
They're, they're subjected to your, they're subjected to your height restrictions.
But it can't be stacked, it can't be, what was it, what was it there, correct?
That's a copy.
Okay, so we're looking at townhouses, basically, or attached homes.
Yeah.
You want townhouses, you know, you know, uh, you want something that you can get a loan on pretty easy.
Townhouses, you guys, you guys are reading, you guys are, all the things you're discussing right now, you're realizing is, this is the whole reason that it's important to have this use in your code, you currently had, you had it in your code, you just didn't have the necessary extra step of subdivision to allow that ownership model, right? You allow them, so I could build two townhomes under your code, but I own both. That's your issue, like, you could potentially do a minor subdivision, but if I go through the minor subdivision, then I'm, I can't even go there, because I have to come back to you for variance, because I now don't need my side yard setback.
We don't want you to do that.
No, no, it's, that's, that's the problem with your current code, like, like, that's why a developer would instantly lose interest in trying to get through it. Um, and that's what you don't want. Townhomes, again, I think all the reasons you've discussed make a lot of sense of sharing them.
And we have to be careful where we put them too.
Yeah. I, I think the, I, I mean, your other option tonight is to, currently, as they are, as it currently sits, the only thing I did was add dash townhomes, and you can make the recommendation to send to the council as is. Cause it's, like I said, it's currently, single family attached is literally defined.
Townhome.
Townhome. The issue that you have is that now under your subdivision, or not the issue, the clarification you now have done is that if they want to subdivide a townhouse and create a separate ownership, now they have to follow the rules that are necessary for utilities, fire safety, et cetera, which we've achieved.
So if we accepted this as is tonight, and let's say, after everybody has time to look at all the maps and the map's complete, and we know where all these different zoning classifications are, could we go back and change it later? And add community commercials?
You, you, to go for the reading.
No, no, well, you, 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 you won't, yes, you can always change your code, but you're going to start from, from scrubbing, which is fine.
So you couldn't, we couldn't make a motion later to say, add community commercial as it permitted, right?
You need to go.
Or conditional.
Well, you, to initiate a text amendment, I went and asked the city council, the city council pointed to the comprehensive plan, they comp, they pointed to all the different plans and said, these are the, these are the, so we, to do it, to do a text amendment in your code, you have, it has to be in line with the comp plan, et cetera. So, you know, we've got, that's why we bracketed our conversation around what we did here tonight, uh, so. I, I, I don't see an issue with your current code, again, I, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't wanna make it through, I have this big problem that it's not in one of your zones, I just wanna make sure you know where it is. Yeah, I wanna make sure you just, the whole point of this table tonight is to show you where the town, what, where townhomes are on your use table. I didn't mean to get into a giant discussion on, on this own district.
On adding the community.
The, the community commercial, but I also wanted, because we were, I just wanted to bring it up, but I'm perfectly comfortable with proceeding to council like this as of today, and if you guys, at a later date, wanna see it, then you can, that's also both in here.
I think that's good anyway.
The other thing too is, if I own a community commercial parcel and I wanna do townhomes, I can always ask for a rezone to medium density or high density.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Easy.
Right, why don't you tell the child a bone?
I mean, it's a, I, you know, so there's, there's a path, there's paths forward and everything.
Well, sure.
So.
Well, I.
Well, then I make a motion that we accept. If I make it in the way.
So your motion's in the packet.
Oh, is it, okay.
So if you're, yes, it is, so if you do wanna make a, make a motion, it's on this memo from me, there's a recommendation from me. I would make, if you wanna move it forward to council tonight, I would make that motion, that's in black, because it has in there to send it to city staff for the final codification.
I make a motion to approve the code updates to chapter fourteen, to be considered by ordinance by the city council, and to have MYRP work with city staff on the final codification, codification of the code.
I'll second. Motion, or, roll call, sorry.
Leoni?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Armijo?
Yes.
Norris?
No.
Uh, Spain? Materano?
Yes.
Rolo? What was your next step to?
We'll get it going, in front of council.
Thank you. You good?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.
You did great work, Monty, yes.
Well, thank you.
Just for clarification, can we keep the townhome?
Yes.
Little word verbiage in there?
Yeah.
Right, it's gonna be just like this, you know, we just agreed to, okay.
Did I miss something?
No, well, she's asking about the slash townhomes.
Just to add the word townhome, so we know it's in the code.
Right.
Cool.